The topics that Lee is going to cover today are four or five topics. The first one is, do tenants have the ability to use contractual or statutory force majeure provisions in connection with the coronavirus crisis? What rights and obligations do tenants and landlords have relative to rent reductions, deferrals, or abatements in light of the crisis and governmental lockdown mandates? If a buyer cancels an escrow as a result of coronavirus fallout, do they have the ability to recover deposits and liquidated damages? And the courts are operating at reduced capacity, how does that affect the enforcement of real estate contracts? So Lee is going to take 20 to 30 minutes and cover those topics. When we sent the invite, we asked anybody who wanted to to send in questions, and we would do our best to get to as many of those as we can. We received about 45 questions. Lee is probably going to be able to get to about 15 or so of those today. So once he finishes, then I will, he and I will go through the questions together. Now, I want to introduce Lee. So Lee Dressy is an expert litigator in the real estate department with Greenberg Glusker here in Los Angeles, and he currently serves as Greenberg and Glusker's general counsel. He's also recognized by his peers earning a Martindale-Hubble AV preeminent rating, the highest rating possible since 2000, and has been named Los Angeles Magazine as a super lawyer since 2009. He is also the legal counsel to AIR CRV's Board of Directors, and so I've had the pleasure of working with Lee over the course of the past 15 years, and I can say from experience, it is very nice having Lee on the same side of the table as me. From 1985 to 1994, Lee was the only full-time attorney and also full-time NCAA basketball coach. He has three grown children, and two years ago, he and his beautiful wife Linda became first-time grandparents to their granddaughter Kennedy. And with that, Mr. Dressy, it is all yours.
Thanks, Tim. So the answer to the four questions are, it depends. Should we move on? Let's, let's, maybe I'll get into more detail. That's probably a good idea. Yeah, as Tim mentioned, I'm a real estate litigator. I've done a lot of things at the law firm. I've been at Greenberg Glusker since I graduated UC State Law School in 1982. And during that time, I've focused primarily on real estate, and I've represented buyers and sellers, I've represented landlords and tenants, I've represented guarantors, and I've represented people trying to enforce guarantees. So I've seen it, you know, clouds from upside down from all sides now. And up until about March 15th, I thought I'd seen everything. Obviously, I hadn't. This is an outstanding, astounding time we're living in, and much of the law that we're going to be talking about today was based upon things back when the world was a little bit more normal. So I'm going to talk about the effect of the present crisis on the, on the real estate market as I see it. And again, this is from a legal standpoint, not necessarily from a business standpoint, but it does cover both. Before March 15th, I think most of us didn't really think about the force majeure concept. Force majeure is a translation of French, and it means act of God. And one scholar said, a force majeure provision is what happens when there's an act of God that was not by a reasonable God, because it's, it's so unusual, it's something people hadn't thought of. It's different than a storm, it's different, it's something that people didn't have in mind at all when they entered into the contract. That being said, there are two ways to apply the force majeure concept. One is, if they're in the contract, there is a force majeure provision, courts have traditionally recognized and honored what the parties had. And if, so that force majeure provision will traditionally be enforced by the courts. If the contract doesn't have a force majeure provision, in California, there's a Civil Code section, which is Civil Code 1511, that would, is the default provision and applies. And essentially, what the courts have always said is, force majeure applies when the performance by one party is impossible or impractical. And it is more than just difficult, it's more than it became more expensive, it is more than the property is not worth what it used to be worth, it's more than it's difficult to get financing, it must be impossible to get financing. So the traditional use of force majeure has been strictly construed by the courts. I don't think courts are going to do that anymore. I think courts are run by judges, and in particular, if you're using an AIR form, most of them have an arbitration provision. And even more so with arbitrators, I think they're more likely to look at the big picture. But both with judges and arbitrators, they recognize right now that this is a unique time. Judges and arbitrators are working remotely, just like the rest of us are. By the way, welcome to my, my home office. I'm at my home office ironically, with, Greenberg Glusker had been at the same location for 50 years, since 1969. We were one of the first law firms, actually the first tenants to go into 1900 Avenue of the Stars. We moved our office for the first time March 1st, 2020, which was great. We moved into great new offices, and two weeks later, we moved, we moved out. So we've got great new offices, so many of you who are dealing with issues of having rent obligations and those sorts of things, we've got the same situation. We've got great offices, and we're not using them. So I want to talk first about, and kind of walk through a hypothetical, it's not really hypothetical, it's, it's a case that I worked on, and I'm going to change some of the facts a little bit. But I, the two parties were a buyer and seller for multimillion dollars of a hotel business. The buyer released all contingencies on March 1st, and on March 20th, approximately, complete shutdown order, and he was supposed to close on March 30th. So there was nothing really in the contract to deal with that issue. And so the buyer took the position, behold it, this is a complete change in circumstance, and I should be able to cancel and get my deposit back. Now, under traditional California law and how courts have treated it, the buyer would probably lose that argument, because the value of the property, in particular a hotel property, went way down. There was a shutdown order, there was no guests in the hotel, and for the foreseeable future, there will be no guests in the hotel. So the question was, could the buyer say, hold it, this has been a complete change in circumstance, not anticipated, even though it's not impossible, this really should be a force majeure? The seller took the position, obviously, that you can go ahead and complete the purchase, and who knows, in three or four months, maybe six months, the value of the property will be back up. Now, if we weren't doing this from my home office, and we're doing this in a conference room or something, I would say, everyone raise your hand, who do you think wins this argument? Half of you would say the buyer, half of you would say the seller. I don't know what's going to happen. My guess is, as I said earlier, that courts and arbitrators who are being forced to deal with these types of issues are going to be much more sympathetic to the party who's claiming a force majeure type event than they would be back in the 80s and 90s when most of the case law came about. So again, the first thing I said when I started was, it depends, is the answer to a lot of, a lot of the questions that we're going to address. I don't know how a court is going to rule, I can guess how a jury would decide, because they're going to be much more sympathetic, and I think an arbitrator is also going to be more sympathetic. But again, that's the first level of what happens. The second level of what happens is, what happens when you go to the Court of Appeal? The Court of Appeal may, in different circumstances, be more sympathetic or not than the person on the ground, which is the trial court or jury. Now, I thought the hotel situation was kind of a good example here, because the hotel business clearly was impacted by this more than most, probably more than any other industry other than cruise ships. I would take a different view if someone's buying a vacant lot, or they're buying a $10 million house in Pacific Palisades. I think in those situations, the buyer is more likely to not be able to get his deposit back if he tries to cancel at the last minute, because those particular items, to me, they just have a lower sympathy factor than someone buying a hotel, someone buying a restaurant, someone buying a retail location, where the impact is so, so graphic. But again, that's the purchase and sale, that's buyers and sellers. And the legislature, the cities, the states, the counties, they haven't really stepped in and given rules about what happens in buyer and seller circumstances. You know, in the landlord-tenant situation, cities and states and counties have been much more aggressive. And because of that, while the buyer and seller market is, is kind of going to be left to the buyers and sellers to sort it out, and then if they can't sort it out, eventually, the courts and the arbitrators will sort it out. With regard to leases and the obligations of tenants to pay rent, for instance, okay, so as I was saying, the governmental entities have really stepped in, and starting out with looking to protect residential tenants, they are now, they have now broadened that protection to both residential and commercial, and most of the people on, on this line are dealing with commercial situations. I'll give you an example of what, this is the city of Long Beach. They essentially, City of Long Beach has prohibited all evictions if the tenant can show a substantial decrease in business income caused by a reduction in opening hours or consumer demand. And if the tenant is able to show that, the City of Long Beach and most of the other jurisdictions that I've seen have essentially prohibited the landlord from proceeding with an eviction. And obviously, that puts the tenant in a much stronger negotiating position with regard to rental payments and other obligations. That format essentially provided affirmative defense to any tenant if the landlord began eviction proceedings. And as part of that, for instance, City of Long Beach required that, once the emergency is declared over, the tenant has three months in which to make up all the missing repayments, but the tenant also had to begin paying full rent once the emergency is declared to be over. So even though that provision is extremely tough on landlords, it's also pretty tough on tenants, who are expected to, once the bell rings and they're allowed to go back into business, they're expected to immediately start paying rent again, and then three months later, make up all the rental payments that they missed. So I know for many tenants, that's simply impossible. The tough thing is that for many landlords, landlords are essentially being asked to give an interest-free loan to those tenants while they are unable to pay rent, and it's an interest-free loan that is due 90 days after the emergency, and realistically, that interest-free loan is being given to a tenant who you probably wouldn't voluntarily give that loan to under these circumstances, if under any circumstances. So the, the setup that's been put into place by most jurisdictions has some real problems with it. But don't worry, the courts have stepped in. The courts have now essentially frozen all eviction proceedings. They, you cannot, if you, if you file a lawsuit, the court will not issue a summons, the court will not proceed with an existing eviction action. I've got one case that I'm handling in which the tenant stopped paying rent in December, commercial tenant, big industrial building, they stopped paying rent in December, they didn't pay December, January, February, they received a three-day notice to pay or quit, they didn't pay, an unlawful detainer action was filed, they didn't respond, and normally in that circumstance, we request a default judgment from the court. And normally, it's, it's just granted, the clerk signs it, sends it back. In this instance, the court refused to do anything, and essentially, they said, the sheriff's not going to enforce an eviction anyway, so we're not going to enter a default judgment. On behalf of a tenant, whose failure to pay rent had nothing to do with the, the present situation. So there's essentially some real issues with tenants paying rent, and I get it, if you've got a retail establishment, a hotel, a restaurant, it's real hard to pay rent right now, but because of the, the way the courts have now issued this directive, they're protecting not only the people who need protection, but they're also protecting people who don't need protection at all. And for me, I do have some issues with that. I've got a similar one, where a guy's renting a house for $20,000 a month in Pacific Palisades, his lease was over March 31st, again, he stopped paying rent months earlier, and now he's living for free in a house where, where my client has to make payments on that house and is not receiving any income from, from the, essentially a freeloaded tenant. So all of you out there must be, must realize that the, the present court situation and the orders that have come out of the Supreme Court of California have frozen a lot of what you would normally do, representing the landlord, and it's put the tenant in a position where they are allowed to stay for free, recognizing that even the court system is, is going to enforce the rental obligation that's still due. As a quick aside, many of the leases provide that, if there is a force majeure provision, it excuses all of the tenant's obligations, except for the obligation to pay rent. And that's consistent with both the jurisdictional rules and what the court has done. So once again, the, the tenant is still obligated to pay rent during this period of time. It's a little bit outside the scope of what I'm going to talk about, but business interruption insurance could apply and could help the tenants in these, in these situations. So if you're representing tenants, make sure that they're pursuing, they're contacting their insurance broker, their insurance agent, and, and trying to get a business interruption insurance, so that it'll cover them when the obligation arises once again. The one area that you can also look at, again, whether your client is a landlord or a tenant, is guarantees or letters of credit or security deposits. None of the present regulations that I've seen have protected guarantors or prevented landlords from drawing down letters of credit or, or security deposits. So to the extent you have a letter of credit or you have a security deposit, I believe, from what I've seen, that there's no express prohibition on going after those, those items. Again, I don't know if courts are going to enforce those, but as of now, there's no statutory prohibition or jurisdictional prohibition on going after those things. The one thing I'm pretty sure a landlord would not be able to do is to draw down the security deposit and then immediately make a demand that the tenant replenishes the security deposit. That item or other monetary obligations under the lease are essentially frozen for the time being. Let's see, okay, I think I've gone through my notes here, Tim. Oh, let me say one more thing. There is, there is a bankruptcy case called Windmill Farms that came down probably 20 years ago, and it essentially says that if a landlord has served a three-day notice to pay or quit and brings an unlawful detainer action, that terminates the lease from bankruptcy purposes. And what that means is, the lease is no longer part of the bankruptcy estate. So even though a, a court may not issue a summons on an unlawful detainer action, there is a decent argument to be made, that if you serve a three-day notice, you can still file a complaint, and, and then if the tenant later goes into bankruptcy, it may give you some advantages in the bankruptcy estate, again, essentially, once all this is over. Understand that the bankruptcy courts may issue their own rulings and give their own directions as to how to deal with this situation, but as of now, to the extent Windmill Farms is still the governing law on these issues, that's something else to keep in mind. Tim, any questions?
Yes, we do have questions. As I mentioned at the beginning, we, when we sent out the invite, we asked for anybody who wanted to, to, to send questions in, we received about 40 or so questions. We're going to now go through as many as we can get to. Find my paper, so the first one, and the first one, I'm going to read a little bit of a, of a situation, and then, and then there'll be a question at the end. So it says, according to a contract, the construction, construction shall be completed by March 1st, 2020. However, the contractor had not completed the construction by April 1st, 2020, when the new shelter in place orders took effect in San, in the San Francisco area. Under the new shelter in place orders, the construction work is not included in essential businesses. The owner thinks the contractor shall be responsible for all the delays, and the contractor thinks it's, he, they are not responsible for any further delays. Who is correct?
Well, my, my initial reaction is that the contractor is most likely liable both for the delay damages from March 1st until April 1st. Again, that's up top, that's my initial reaction. But the more I think about it, this is almost a classic force majeure position for the contractor to be in. So while he's liable for delay damages until the shutdown, I think he, the, the contractor may have a decent argument that if he could have finished it by, say, April 15th, and is prevented from doing so, he, I, I think has a decent argument that he's liable for that six weeks through April 15th, but the force majeure rule is that if it is impossible for you to complete your project, the obligations of that contract are either excused or more likely delayed during the period of the force majeure. So that goes back to the first answer I gave all, all the, a while ago, which is, it depends. I could see a judge ruling either way on that question. The, the, the thing the contractor has to worry about is, absent his earlier breach, he wouldn't have been in a position to where the, the force majeure event caused all these additional damages. And so the flip side of the argument is, if someone suffers damages, should it be the party who, whose negligence or inability or failure to perform originally led to the force majeure even mattering? So I think I would, I would say the contractor is likely, likely to lose, but I think he's got some decent arguments.
Okay, very good. Next question, can a commercial landlord require a commitment by tenants that any disaster relief money would be used for the purpose they requested it for? For example, tenants that request money for rent under the PPP would not hold that money once it comes in, but would promptly use it to pay rent?
That's a good question, and I, I've seen several landlords essentially attempt to do that very thing in terms of granting rental deferments and things like that. The, the problem with that scenario in terms of trying to get 100% of the loan amount is that, my understanding of the way that works is, these loans are essentially grants if the borrower, in this case, the tenant, uses them in a particular way. And the rule, as I understand it, is the borrower can use up to 25% of the loan amount for rent. It's really designed for payroll. And so the borrower, in this case, the tenant, is supposed to be using 75% of the loan amount towards payroll. If it does that, that money is subject to being forgiven. You can put 25% towards rent, and it still can be forgiven. Obviously, there's other expenses too, but from the borrower's standpoint, the borrower's going to want to do everything it can to make sure that the loan is, is ultimately forgiven. And therefore, a landlord insisting that more than 25% of the loan be applied to rent, if, if I'm the tenant, I don't do it. And, and Tim, you may want to mention that we're going to have a, a further discussion on that whole, that, that whole thing next week.
Right, so next week, we will have another, another attorney on who will be covering all the details of the stimulus package, so that, those types of questions will get covered in detail there. Also, a comment, I am monitoring the chat questions that are coming in. It is unlikely that we're going to get to many of those. As I mentioned, when we sent the invitation out on Monday, we requested anybody who had questions to please email those to me. We got about 40 or more questions through email. Lee and I have gone through those, we sorted them, we've, you know, if there were any duplicates, we've gotten rid of those, and we've come up with about 15 or 20 that Lee is going to address today. If he gets through all those, and we still have time at the end, then we will go back to the chat box and we'll, and we'll filter through some of those. So the chat box is being looked at, but the likelihood of, so, and currently, we have 254 people on, I'm getting questions texted to me as Lee is talking, they're coming in through the chat box, I've seen a couple come through my email while, while the session's been going on, so we're going to do the best we can to get to the, the ones that we've designated so far, and then we'll, and then any, if we have additional time, we'll get through those, through some more. Next one, Lee, can a commercial landlord lawfully require a guarantee such that any deferred rent amounts would be personally guaranteed by a principal of the tenant?
Well, the, the way the question is framed, I think the answer is no. Can a landlord require that in, in order to defer rent? The, effectively, the rent is, can be deferred by the tenant now anyway, if it can show, as I mentioned earlier, that its business has been substantially affected. While the term substantially affected might be a little ambiguous, and again, the courts may need to sort out what that means, if, you know, again, we're talking about retail tenants who have been shut down, restaurants who have been shut down, hotels who have been shut down, those people will be able to show fairly easily, I think, that their business has been substantially affected, which, under most jurisdictions, gives them a right to a rental deferral, whether the landlord wants it or not. Other businesses who are maybe not so clear, it's going to be a subject negotiation between the, the parties. And the more that the landlord is willing to give, for instance, giving more time than the three months allowed under the jurisdiction I mentioned earlier, it's a subject negotiation, he can ask for a guarantee, but again, can he require it? No, because the tenant's got the ability to say, no, I'm not going to give you a personal guarantee.
Okay, number four, can a commercial landlord require tenants to allow it to review the tenant's applications for government assistance upon request?
I think that's probably the same answer as before. You know, there, there are rules that allow you to look at governmental documents and things that have been filed with the government under the Freedom of Information Act. Would that apply here? If so, that's a long process. So it's not necessarily a private document, but to the extent that it has confidential information, I think that the tenant has a pretty good argument that he need not show that to the landlord. I know landlords are asking for financial statements, are asking for proof of the inability to pay, and I think that's, that's a lot more legitimate. In fact, even the, the Long Beach ordinance I read earlier requires the tenant to show to the court that it, it, the business has been materially affected by the, by the crisis. So it seems to me that, in that instance, the landlord should be entitled to see it, because anything submitted to the court to prove a point is something that would be subject to discovery in an action. Again, backing up, there, there won't be any new actions on unlawful detainer action for quite some time.
Next question, if both, this is on a, on a purchase, if both the buyer and seller sign the PSA prior to the state of California's stay-at-home mandate, how should you treat the buyer's right to inspect the property timeframes, given that conduction, conduction inspections, I think that's the word you meant, are difficult to do right now? I think you ignore the word conduction and just inspections. So he's, he's trying to find out, if you can't get into the property, that there's timeframes in the purchase agreement, how, how are those dealt with?
Um, I, Tim, I, I can read his writing better than you. Um, I, Tim, I, I can read his writing better than you. I think he said to conduct an inspection.
Oh yeah, that's what he meant.
I know, it's hard. Yeah, I, I, when this question came in, I asked a couple of my, the transactional folks in my office what they thought about this, and I got, frankly, I got different answers from different people. The, to me, it seems like if you're unable, because, well, let me back up by saying inspectors are not considered essential services. So they are not, presumably unable to go out and actually inspect properties, whether the, whether it's a house or an industrial building, whatever it is, they're not able to do it. I know there's at least one entity who is offering to do that remotely, not sure how that works, but both inspectors and appraisers are going to have a hard time getting out of there, getting out to the property. To me, that puts it in a position where the buyer can ask the seller for an extension of time until he can actually do those things. Is the seller required to give that, give the extension? I don't think so. I think the seller can say, you know what, you're unable to do it, you've got the right to cancel the contract if you want to. I think that's a very close call in terms of how that'll come out. But to the, to the extent, to the extent it's before contingencies have been released. And if the seller's being a little more difficult, then probably I would be in the same situation. The buyer may just want to take his deposit and go home.
Okay. Number six. If force majeure, whether contractually or statutorily, extends inspection periods because of the buyer's inability to perform, how should you then treat other contingencies such as financing, which may expire prior to the eventual expiration of the inspection contingency?
Um, I, Tim, I think that'd be the same answer. It, it, it depends how, it, it depends how cooperative the, the seller's going to be in dealing with these, these issues. Remember that at the end of the day, for both of these questions, for any question having to do with an existing purchase and sale agreement, the ten, the buyer has the ability to essentially say, I believe I'm entitled to force majeure protections, file a lawsuit and record a list pendants. By doing so, the, the buyer essentially keeps his place in line. He runs the risk of losing the deposit if the court ultimately decides that his position was incorrect. But by putting a list pendants on the property, the buyer's effectively frozen the property, no one else can buy it. Now, the seller has the right to go into court and seek to expunge or get rid of the list pendants, but as a practical matter, the seller can't do that now. The courts are essentially not operating except for emergencies, and they have defined emergencies as, I don't remember the exact language, but it's essentially, it's a, it's something that affects public health and safety. Well, selling an Ontario industrial building for two million dollars, not being able to do that immediately, doesn't really affect public health and safety. So the seller is going to be put in a very tough position that he's not going to be able to get rid of the list pendants until the court's open and he's able to get a, a hearing on that. And this is like after, after an accident on the, on the Santa Monica freeway, it's going to take a long time for the traffic to be flowing smoothly again, again, and that really applies to the courts. So I, I guess to circle back, the, the buyer, if he's willing to risk his deposit if he's wrong, can essentially say to the seller, listen, I, I'm going to buy the property, we should be able to work together on this.
Question number seven. I am curious about the moratorium on evictions and specifically how that relates to notification of default. Or it seems it is the tenant's responsibility to notify the landlord of their hardship relating to COVID-19 in order to be covered in, in, related to COVID-19 in order to be covered by the moratorium. What if they do not do this and just do not pay rent or notify us after we default them? There is so much nuance in this, any insight and clarity is appreciated.
Well, I'll, I'll answer it as best I can. Certain jurisdictions have barred even the service of a three-day notice. Santa Monica, I believe, is, is one of those. So absent such a prohibition by your local jurisdiction, you can serve, under my understanding, you can serve a three-day notice. The, the jurisdictions that I've seen, that triggers an obligation by the tenant to respond to the landlord. Uh, let me back up. The jurisdictions that I've seen, many of them require the three-day notice to include language that says, essentially, you should be aware that, I can't remember exactly what the language is, but you should look at your jurisdiction. But essentially, the, the three-day notice now has mandatory language telling the tenant that if their business has been impacted by the present crisis, they are required to inform the landlord of that point. And again, then we go back to the question of if they, if they don't cure the default, what can you do? Essentially, not all that much at the moment. Did that answer the entire question, Tim?
Yes, it did. Very good, very good. Next question. If a landlord today gives a three-day notice to pay rent or quit, does the time start to run even though the courts are currently closed?
Um, I, I, I believe it does. This, these aren't, the, the fact that the courts are, well, back up, the courts aren't technically closed. The courts are open. You can go into court and, and make an application. A judge sitting in his home office will rule on it, they'll, they'll set up a, a hearing. So the courts are not technically closed, which also means these aren't legal holidays. A three-day notice to pay or quit expires on the first day that is neither a weekend or a legal holiday. So if a notice is served on Wednesday, the, under normal circumstance where Monday's not a holiday, the obligation to pay rent to cure runs out at close of business on the Monday. Same thing if you give a notice on a Friday. You count Saturday, Sunday, obligation to pay rent, under the three-day notice expires five o'clock on Monday. So yes, unless your jurisdiction prohibits the service of three-day notice entirely, like Santa Monica, yes, the, the existence of the, the court mandate about pursuing evictions doesn't affect the three-day notice.
Very good. Next question. Can CAM collection be enforced even if rent collection cannot be?
I think that one's, I think I know that one. That one's easy. I think the answer is no. First of all, under most leases, all monetary obligations are considered rent. And so, no, you, you can't collect CAM charges, other charges that are due under the lease, simply because it's not technically rent.
Okay. If a tenant does not pay rent and during that time the lease expires, what recourse does the landlord have to collect if the tenant does not renew or exercise an option?
Well, that, that's, that's really two questions. The first question is what can you do to collect the rent? Well, if, you know, say, say the lease expires June 30th and the tenant moves out. Well, in that instance, you've got the same situation you always do. You apply the security deposit to as much as you can. And then you've got a breach of lease lawsuit for failure, failure pay rent. Unfortunately, unlike the unlawful detainer action, the breach of lease action takes a long time to get to court. So that's one issue. The other issue is what happens if the lease expires June 30th and the tenant doesn't move out? Well, that goes back to what I was talking about earlier, which is the, the court's mandate that you can't pursue an unlawful detainer action seems to be written in such a way that applies to all unlawful detainer actions, even a tenant who stays on when he's not entitled to because the lease has expired. And again, the, the good news is that once the emergency expires, that's an unlawful detainer action you'll be able to get to court very quickly on. But, but that, you will have a problem getting into court to get rid of that tenant. The good news for the landlord from this standpoint is that the AIR forms generally provide that a holdover tenant is liable for a hundred and fifty percent of the rent that was paid the last month of the lease term. So if a, a tenant stays on after the lease term expires, he doesn't just owe the, the rent that was paid before, it's a hundred and fifty percent. And there was a recent case, I believe that came out in January or February, that held that that, that provision is fully enforceable. The tenant in that case had argued, had argued it was a penalty, but the, the court essentially took a laissez-faire attitude to it, and they said, it's in the lease, it's a commercial lease, it was, the landlord, landlord and tenant negotiated this provision, even though it's in a form, they said, the tenant could have said, no, I want that to be a hundred and ten percent, I want it to be a hundred and twenty percent. And, but the court held that's fully enforceable. So on the second of my two scenarios here, in that situation, the holdover tenant can be hit pretty hard for holdover rent because a hundred and fifty percent is a pretty hefty increase.
Okay, we still have ten minutes, so I'm going to, I'm going to throw you some that came in as we've been talking.
Okay.
The first one is, and I, and I actually was asked this yesterday by a broker, but somebody texted it to me while we've been talking. What disclosure requirements do brokers have when they are representing a property for lease or for sale if they know that a tenant in the building was diagnosed, you know, had, was, was, had the virus?
Well, my, my advice on that question or any question having to do with the condition of a piece of property has been the same for decades, which is if there's any doubt about whether to disclose something, you disclose it. I, 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 I call it the, the hindsight rule. If in hindsight, it turns out that that, that fact becomes material, and you don't know if it's material at the time so much, you can guess on certain circumstances, but if it turns out to be material later, then it will be seen as material at the moment. And for instance, on this question, if the broker does not disclose that fact and somebody moves in and somebody then gets sick, I wouldn't want to be in the position of defending that broker. It's much easier to disclose it and then to say, but we followed all the CDC guidelines and we, we fogged it and we disinfected and here's the receipt for what we did. It's much better to do that and disclose it and, and do the first thing first, which is to do, actually do all those things, than to not do it and ultimately have a, a problem. And that's true with everything. That's, that's true with, you know, roofs that used to leak and anything. Disclose, 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 because i- if the one thing you don't disclose turns out to be material because it mattered, it's better to have disclosed it than not.
Okay. Another one that came in. The non-payment of rent is a default under AIR CRE lease, triggering things beyond eviction, for instance, not being able to exercise the option. Is the tenant still liable for such events?
Well, the option question is a great one. It, it, it seems to me that if there is a rent deferral imposed by the state of California, for instance, that the rent is not technically due and a tenant should be able to exercise the option. But I, I can see the other argument too. So if I'm the tenant, it, it, it puts me in a tough position, whether or not, if I'm planning to exercise an option, whether to pay the rent or not and, and go forward. Remember, in this instance, most of the AIR forms provide that a tenant is not in default, capital D default, under the lease unless the landlord has given notice of that default and the tenant has failed to cure. So the mere fact that, you know, say, say the tenant's required to, to exercise its option by May 5th and the tenant doesn't pay May 1st rent, on May 5th, the tenant can exercise the option because the landlord has not put that tenant in default yet. However, if the tenant doesn't pay rent on May 1st, the landlord gives notice of default on May 5th, and the tenant tries to pay rent on May 30th, well, that's where you get into the, the question of whether or not the tenant is in default or not. And I can see it going both ways. But the, the, the exercise of the option issue is, those are always complicated.
Okay. Another one that came in via chat. My client is the landlord of a commercial mixed-use building. An office tenant under an AR lease has taken the position that because the tenant cannot use the premises under the current emergency orders, the lease is automatically voided under the doctrines of commercial frustration or impossibility. Thoughts?
That's, that is the question that we're going to be dealing with over the next two years in the courts. There's a bunch of defenses available to tenants and, and there's no way to predict how they're going to come out. It's frustration of purpose, failure of consideration, force majeure provisions, obviously. That we're going to have to work through this. And I, I, again, it'll depend on the facts, it'll depend on the judge or arbitrator you wind up in front of. Remember landlords have their own obligations. They've got to, they've got to maintain the property, they've got to pay taxes on the property, they've got to pay their mortgage. There, a- all of these provisions, whi- which are seemingly easier in the residential situation, are harder in commercial situations. So that, that's a great question, and we could, we could spend another hour talking about the permutations of that.
Okay. AIR CRE recently created an addendum for rent relief. Is it really a good idea to use that form due to the following? We have no idea how long the situation will last nor the economic impact of it. Therefore, wouldn't the payback provisions in the future simply be a guess that might just set the stage for yet another needed amendment to the lease triggered by the lessee stating he is still unable to pay the, the, the amount of rent?
That's, that's a great question is, and this thing continues to evolve. And I think all, all of us just need to do the best we can today. Landlords and tenants, they need to work together because the landlord needs to collect some of its rent as best it can. But at the end of the day, when this is all over, the landlord also wants a functioning tenant. It does no good for the landlord to have all of its tenants go out of business. And, you know, we could, if we could, I, I heard somebody say that if we could freeze everyone in America in place, six feet or more from each other for a couple of weeks, this thing would be over. It's not exactly true, but there's, we've all got to kind of think about where are we going to be when this is over? And hopefully it's June 1st or someday that's not in the tw- to, to distant future. But in the meantime, you want to act reasonably from your, from your business standpoint so that you don't need to call me and have a lawsuit because a tenant moved out and they're arguing about whether or not they were entitled to do so or not. So going back to this particular question, yes, if you, if you enter into the, the amendment that the AIR just sent around, you got to recognize it's, it's a temporary amendment and it's given with the goal, it sets forth maybe benchmarks, what people are hoping happens. But if this thing goes on for longer than expected, yeah, you might need to renegotiate. And that's, I mean, that's true, that's been true forever, it's just heightened right now.
Okay. We have time for two more. So the first one is, a client told me, a lawyer, a client told me his lawyer recommended using the quiet enjoyment right to avoid paying rent or to cancel their lease. Any comment?
Well, I would never criticize another lawyer unless he's opposite me on a case. I think that falls into the if the tenant doesn't have to pay rent during a period of time, I think it'll be difficult to justify a complete termination of the lease. And I would go back by saying, whenever I'm advising people how to act in a particular circumstances, I always think that the email you send or the communication you send, how will it look if this winds up in litigation and if this other attorney puts it on an exhibit in front of the jury? And that's why I always say to people, be reasonable and reflect in your communications with other people during this really screwed up time that you're reasonable. You'll work with them and that whether you represent the tenant or the landlord or the buyer or the seller, if you're unable to work it out, show that you're the reasonable one. Courts like to rule in favor of people who seem like good people and try to do the right thing. So document your communications you've had. Be friendly in your communications, be understanding in your communications, and at the end of it, say, say, thanks. Look forward to hearing from you.
Very good. Okay, we're right up against the hour timeframe. We have time for one more. While I have been a broker now for almost 49 years, my main focus at this stage of my career is the management of seven buildings I own, seven buildings I own a portion of. The bulk of my tenants are mom and pop, small business type tenants. My question is twofold. What are my legal obligations under a standard AIR multi-tenant gross lease? And what are most other landlords doing in the form of rent deferment?
Well, the many of the AIR form leases don't obligate the landlord to do anything in this situation. You've got a tenant who is unable to pay rent or can only pay partial rent. There's nothing in the, in any lease, AIR or otherwise, that obligates the landlord to accept late rent or defer rent or do anything. You know, that being said, as I just said, you want a functioning tenant at the end of the day. The final question is a great one. What are most landlords doing? We have actually, we're trying to put together a data set in our law firm in terms of what our clients are doing. We've got a remarkable real estate department and they're getting these questions all the time. What can I do? What should I do? And then the last question is, what's everybody else doing? And it's all over the map. I mean, most of you saw the Irvine Company essentially gave everybody three months and then to be paid back over 12 months. You know, that's a very well-funded landlord who can afford to do that. So you've got that extreme. You've got mom and pop landlords who own, you know, a small retail center. They can't do that. So what are landlords doing? It's all over the map and the only advice I can give to everybody is, you know, do what makes sense for you. Whether you're the tenant, represent the tenant, whether you represent the landlord, do what makes sense for you to keep yourself in business and to hopefully keep the tenant or your landlord in business so that at the end of this, you can work things out. That would include things like adding for three months off, you get extend the lease for three months. I've got another case where somebody, there was some dispute about the about some past claims and they said, listen, if you drop those claims, I'll forgive your rent, forgive half rent for three months. So again, all depends on the facts, but you know, look at the whole picture, look at where you want to be when this is over and then make the best deal you can.
Very good. Lee, I want to thank you very much. This was very informative. It was fantastic. Lee and I, you and I will have a discussion about maybe doing another one, but certainly the AIR will be doing at least a few more town halls like this with experts in the industry. So if any of you who are listening, your friends couldn't get in or your colleagues couldn't get in, we'll be sending out an email. The entire session has been recorded, so they can listen back to it and hear all of these great advice. And then look forward to other emails for us next week on the next town hall. Lee, any final comments?
Well, I'm looking forward to not only the next town hall, but I'm looking forward to things getting back to normal. I wish the NBA was around. I feel badly for all the like my ex-college players who would have lost the ability to be in the NCAA playoffs and things like that. And, you know, everybody's got their own individual issues. Let's hang together.
Very good. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, everybody, for participating and we will certainly be in touch. Bye-bye.